If you would like to turn off your cameras? Or if you're ready. We are live on YouTube. If you would like to turn off your cameras? Or if you're ready. Here.
All right. This is Julie Bitzer and I am the new president of Reston Association. And I want to welcome everyone to our special meeting of the Board of Directors tonight, May 21st of 2020. I'd like to establish quorum at the beginning of our meeting, so I'm again going to call on my fellow directors so that they might acknowledge in this new virtual Zoom format that they are here and present. Now we'll start with the districts. I represent South Lakes Districts. John Mooney.
Okay, had to unmute myself. John Mooney representing the North Point District.
Karen Anton.
Karen Anton representing Hunters Woods Dogwood.
And Erin Webb.
I'm Erin Webb. I'm of the Lake Anne Tall Oaks District.
And we have a number of member. Tom Mokaren.
Tom Mokaren at large.
Sarah Silverich.
Sarah at large.
Did I do it better than that, Tom?
Yes, you did.
Um. Bob Patrino.
Yes, Bob Patrino at large.
And who did I? Oh, Ben Ayer at large. Mike Collins. You're on mute.
Hi, Mike's here.
Right. Apartments. I do not see Van. Last call for Van.
He's on. He's connected.
Okay. And are you on? There's Van. I will let him work out his audio difficulties. I do see that he is present by virtue of Zoom's features, though we do have quorum. And thus I'll call the meeting to order. And the first thing that I want to address is the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar, the adoption of the meeting agenda, approval of the board minutes from the previous meeting last Wednesday. If I might entertain a motion to accept calendar as stated. So moved. So a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Madam, madam president, I have a question. I had indicated that I believe there was a mistake in the minutes for the May 13 meeting. Was that corrected?
I read it and I thought that it reflected a change, but frankly, I was hoping that you had done a second, second go around on it. Want to take a moment?
How did you do that? I apologize that I didn't.
Well, go ahead and take a moment on that. I will go ahead and while you check that, I wanted to just share some opening remarks and I'll do that while you check. One of the things that we are doing tonight, our meeting is very much focused on the COVID pandemic and its impact on our community. But these are troubled times, unsettled times, and tonight we're going to focus on that. But one of Reston's founding principles that that I recall forever and ever was that it was to welcome those of varying race, religion, and economic status. And I'd like to speak for my fellow board members as Reston residents and simply say that hate has no place in Reston. I would like to move on in our meeting with that slide statement and try to figure out how do we make Reston present in people's lives today? John, did you?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm having a hard time getting it. I'm getting there now.
Okay. It is in the board packet. I know it was very confusing during that period of time in the last meeting of you know, the bouncing ball on what the motions were and which ones were seconded and yeah, pulling back. And, and I do remember that we first addressed whether or not we could address a PPA, not PPA, PPP, and we will be discussing that a bit later in the meeting. And whether or not the public notice of our executive session that we had thought we were going to do last week had been properly publicized. And it was not. So therefore, the majority of the board voted that we would not have an executive session last, last week.
Here we go.
And were you able to adjust your audio? I can see you now, Ben.
Madam President.
Yes.
As, as I see it, so this is today's full packet. It still says that I moved that we add an executive session to the May 13th agenda. And as you say, it was very confusing, but I do, because I opposed it in some detail, I can't imagine that I would, would have moved it.
All right. So therefore, we need to take the minutes off of the consent calendar and defer those to the next full board meeting for approval.
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor, you can raise your hands. I think I can see everybody. Unless you wish to chime in, you're welcome to do that too. I see Tom and Sarah and Bob. Karen, Erin, myself, not sure what Mike's doing. John Mooney raised his hand and so did Mike. So I believe we have everyone agreeing that we should move it onto the June, well, hopefully June, full board meeting for review, leaving us with the agenda that is currently in your packet. So we need a motion to approve the agenda minus the approval of the board minutes.
Oh, move.
I'll second.
And are there any in opposition? Let me do it that way a little quicker. I see no objections, so the motion carries. We're now on to member comments. I do know that Tracy Waller had signed up to speak. Christina, can you help us get to Tracy?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm Tracy Waller. How is everyone, Madam President? Thank you guys for having me. As I know I have three minutes, but I'm going to try to hurry up. It's kind of along the lines of Madam President's statement about this meeting being mostly about COVID and everything that we're doing.
Tracy, I need you to state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Tracy Waller, T R A C I, Waller, W A L L E R. And my address is 11624 New Bridge Court.
Thank you. Proceed.
What did you say?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Should I put my video on?
Up to you. If you'd like us to see you, you can.
Oh, okay. I guess, will it work?
Yep.
Can you see me? Okay. So I am the Class of 2020 representative from the PTA for the Class of 2020. I have a graduating senior. And along with like five to 10 to 15 to 50 other parents, we have all been painstakingly trying to figure out something to do to celebrate for our, our kids. We have come up with an amazing plan. It's foolproof. It's safe. It's within guidelines. And basically, it's a parade and we want the entire community to come out and support our seniors. On June 3rd, that's a Wednesday, it's seven o'clock. I spoke with Mrs. Retcher today, the principal of South Lakes, and she said that the cap and gowns would be delivered, you know, by one o'clock that afternoon. So it's our hope that we will get all of the seniors lined up. Of course, it's a lot of logistics and we have a ton of volunteers to do that. Our plan is to line them all up along South Lakes Drive, distance apart, six to eight feet apart. We're going to have a, a, an image sign or name sign with a balloon of the whole South Lakes Row from Colts Neck all the way to South Lakes will be just a big sea of blue. And then it's our hope that the community will rally, will have a grand marshal, and they'll just drive past the seniors, hawking, waving, throwing flowers, carnations, candy, kind of like in the same spirit as the homecoming parades are. I am here tonight to ask for the Reston Association's support. As you know, all of the kids in that live in Lake Anne and South Lakes and Hunters Woods, et cetera, all attend South Lakes High School. So it would be helpful to us if we could use your platform, your social media, et cetera, to get the word out and say, this is a community parade. We're celebrating the seniors. That's the least we could do. They've missed everything that goes with being a senior. They've missed their prom. They've missed, you know, senior speeches, graduations, senior picnic, senior trips, even five minutes out early on Fridays is like a little senior perk that they get. And we were just trying to come up with something that was in the bounds of, you know, the governor's order to stay distanced and no gatherings. And we just learned, another mom just learned that a school in New Jersey just did it and it came off without a hitch. So there's precedent that it's being done. So we're just, we just really want the association to consider being one of our main sponsors and being able to support the seniors and let the community know that you're behind us and to encourage them to drive by and celebrate the seniors. And I have a proposal that I could send. I, I emailed it to Mike Leon earlier today in case he wants copies or something like that.
I've got it, Tracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much, Tracy. It sounds a lot of fun and I'm so glad that there is an initiative to truly recognize these seniors.
We even have masks. We have someone making masks. So not only will they be distanced, but they'll have masks on. So we've, we've, we've thought of everything.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are we allowed to participate?
Yes, that's the whole idea. We want everybody out. Like it would be awesome if you had your car all decorated, had your name on there, at-large member. It's almost like a homecoming parade in reverse, you know? Instead of the seniors driving by, they're going to be the ones being paraded and everybody's going to be throwing stuff to them. So I, I'm just really excited about it and I, I'm really hopeful that you guys could have a moment to look at it. We have to get everything ordered right away. We want to move forward, but we just really want to move forward with, forward with your blessing.
Well, thank you again for sharing your message with us.
Okay.
Consideration and see what we can find them. Christina, are there any other members who would like to comment?
Nobody else has contacted us and I'm not seeing any hands raised right now.
Thank you. Then we'll move into the main part of the agenda. Hank, I do want to give you an opportunity to share any, any news or whatever before we start on the hard work.
Certainly, we do have a lot of positive news to share that I'll go through as well as, you know, some of the issues we're addressing as we go through my presentation. But really, the good news that we want to share with the group and with the community is the, the hiring of our new Director of Covenants, a gentleman by the name of Cam Adams, comes from another homeowners association, a lot of experience. He's gone through a pretty exhaustive interview process with both senior team as well as members of the covenants department and is a stellar, stellar candidate and we believe is going to be a stellar new addition to the staff. So that's good news. Cam's scheduled to start on the first of June and we will be introducing him around, knowing to the board with the community at that, once he gets, gets on board. So that's some really positive news that we have going on right now.
That's great. Thank you. And congratulations to you and the staff. The first item on the agenda is the cluster outreach update. And that is I don't know that I know how to say your last name. Try it, McCassey. So in this portion of the agenda is to provide us a progress report on various initiatives focused on advancing cluster outreach and relation. So take it away.
Happy Thursday evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I've probably been on a gajillion video calls over the last couple of months, but I still feel the need to check. So thank you for verifying. My name is Megan. I'm the Community Outreach Manager in Covenant's Department, working on spearheading our cluster outreach initiatives. What I would like to do tonight is to just discuss a little bit briefly the opportunities that we have with regard to cluster outreach. Tell you a little bit about what we've been doing currently to address those opportunities. Tell you also, provide you with an update on the plans that we have with regard to our cluster outreach initiatives and then answer any questions that you might have. So with further ado, I'm going to.
Hello, all. Can you hear me? This is Ben Ayer.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just checking audio.
Oh, great. Thank you, Ben.
Can you all see my screen?
Yes. Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, so basically what I want to talk to you about tonight is that, as you, as I think we can all agree, cluster outreach includes a wide variety of practices and activities, but at this time, I, I, I believe that none are more pressing or important than cluster standards. Or at least assisting clusters to update their standards and supporting them in updating their standards. So just as a general overview, Reston's governing documents include a set of design guidelines that are adopted by the board and used as a tool in administering Reston's design covenants. The design guidelines are divided into single family, cluster, et cetera, and they are intentionally broad. So for example, commercial design guidelines will apply to all village centers. Single family design guidelines will apply to all single families, single family properties. Mr. Simon's vision for Reston included 134 completely unique clusters and this necessitates cluster standards, which are responsive to the very unique aesthetics and conditions of each cluster. And by conditions, what I mean when I say conditions are that the needs of, for example, a lakefront cluster will be different than a landlocked cluster that's next to a school or a cluster that is built in such a way that radon mitigation equipment might be necessary. So cluster standards are really, really critical to the clusters, to preserving their aesthetic and helping to support their, their, their very hyper local conditions. It, it's really important to note the, the three bullets that I have listed at the bottom, which is that cluster standards are promulgated by and updated by the clusters. They are approved by the DRB and I should say, when they're initially developed, they are offered by the builder. So that's when cluster standards are first offered. They are approved by the DRB and that includes any updates to cluster standards. And cluster standards are enforced by the Reston Association. So Reston Association staff or the DRB, they do not develop or update cluster standards, but they do enforce cluster standards. And this is the sort of the framework that we're operating within when it comes to cluster standards. When we talk about enforcing cluster standards, just an example that I'd like to give is, is whether it's conducting a resale inspection on a property in a cluster or making a recommendation to the DRB on a submitted DRB application, staff will be looking to do so based on conformance with cluster standards. So that's what we're sort of talking about when we talk about enforcing cluster standards. This would all be very easy operationally if cluster standards were fully up to date. The opportunity that we're encountering right now is that cluster standards throughout Reston's 134 clusters are largely out of date. Though the clusters really, really, really need our support in assisting them, providing them with any support that they need in facilitating the cluster standard update process. And that is really one of the most important opportunities that we have with regard to clusters right now. Just going to advance the slide. Excuse me for just a minute. I'm having some technical difficulties here.
Okay. This particular presentation wasn't in the public packet of information. So I assure our members that Christina and Megan will work to make sure that it is in our public accessible documents. Side note there.
So what has Stop and Doing to assist the clusters in updating their standards? Here's a couple of things that we've been working on. As of, as of the, the beginning of this year, as of 2020, we have now been hosting monthly cluster standard update dedicated DRB meetings. This is a very important part of the process because as we go out into the community to try to encourage clusters to submit updates, help them to understand the process themselves. It, when, when the, the last thing that we want is for a cluster, cluster to do the work of, of creating and submitting an update and then have to tell them that they have to wait a month or even two months to have that update reviewed. By hosting these monthly dedicated to update cluster standard update meetings, we can provide a very expeditious timeline for review by the DRB of those submitted updates. I, I, I wanted to put a note in here about the format of those review meetings. Obviously, when we started hosting these meetings at the beginning of this year, they were held in person. We could not have foreseen what would have happened in the COVID era. One of the happy results of having to go virtual is that we were able to confirm that we are able to host these meetings where we were, where the DRB is reviewing cluster standard updates in a virtual setting. That's, that is very helpful to know that we can do that going forward. That will, I, I believe, create the capacity to really push through the design review process, the number of updates that we need to see coming in from the, from the clusters and that we need to help the clusters to, to, to try to submit for review. But I did also want to note that even if we are able to go into a virtual review setting, there was a, there was a notable added benefit to having these in-person review meetings that were dedicated to cluster standard updates. And that is that when we were able to get all of the cluster representatives into a room, they were there to interact with the DRB. It was also basically a a cluster networking session. And that was a really nice benefit to be able to, to, to offer to the clusters. They were all there to, to, again, to interact with the DRB about their, their application, but they were also able to interact with themselves. And we, staff has noticed an uptake as we're going out into the community to try to solicit these updates and provide education on the process that there is a heightened interest in interacting with each other. Cluster boards have questions for each other. They have a lot in common. And it, and so these meetings have the added benefit of providing the ability to network, talk to each other about best practices and just create a a, a, a social and professional environment for cluster board representatives. So that's another additional benefit that I would love to continue to see when we're able to have in-person meetings, review meetings again for these cluster standard updates. Another really important initiative that staff has been working on with regard to cluster standard updates is digitizing all of the cluster standards. Believe it or not, cluster standards have historically lived in these three-ring binders in our offices. And when you're, whether you're talking to a member who needs to make an improvement or repair to their home or if you're trying to talk to a cluster board member about updating their standards, being able to refer them to an online catalog of those standards of what they currently look like is really, really, really critical. We, I'm very pleased to report that of the 134 cluster standard books, we refer to them as flipbooks. 95 have currently been digitized and are available online. I want to just show you, this is an example of what they, this is what the bookcase looks like on Reston.org. And this is an example here of what you'll see if you open up a cluster, a cluster standard book. So as you can see, they're, they're standardized, they're very organized, and they're very easy to use. And that's really, user friendliness is really, really important when it comes to, to cluster standards because they, they, they can be a little dense and difficult to understand. So we tried to make it as absolutely user friendly as possible, and I believe that this format achieves that goal. They even include links to products. They, they show, they go through all of the elements. You'll see on the right there is the, the the table of contents so that you can click through and find whatever it is that you're looking for. So this is, this is an example of what we're talking about when we talk about digital cluster standards. This is another page from another cluster's book. Again, very designed to be user friendly and, and quickly and excessively provide the information that any homeowner in Reston needs who lives in a cluster to quickly get the information that about any improvements that they might want to make. So those are some things that we're doing with regards specifically to cluster standards. There's a lot of other initiatives that we're working on and that we have planned for the future that will significantly improve our ability to deliver improved cluster outreach. The first is the cluster newsletter. We will be launching mid-June, the first, the first issue of a cluster dedicated newsletter. Communications has been very helpful to Covenant's staff in getting this done. The newsletter itself will be, again, largely aimed at cluster board, cluster association members and will share a number of seasonal, timely articles that will be of interest to cluster board members and cluster associations. In addition to the newsletter, we're also working on smaller sort of more frequently sent out messaging to the clusters, for example, to let them know the next cluster standard review meeting is, is two weeks away. Submit your update as soon as you can. Or just anything that is sort of a smaller, more frequent message that we might want to send out. And that's where another, another opportunity that comes up with the resident portal, which is the other thing that which is the other thing that we're going to be launching, that we're doing the soft launch of the resident portal next week. The resident portal is not necessarily aimed specifically at the clusters. Any member will be able to create an account that will be linked to their property file. They'll be able to view violations, submit DRB applications through the resident portal. And it also allows staff a means to communicate directly and in a mass mailing sort of manner. And that is something that we can also use to communicate with the cluster boards more, on a more frequent basis. The other thing that we've been working on is sort of a, a staff restructure. As I mentioned, I'm the community outreach manager, so I'm going out and, and regularly meeting with cluster boards. Well, I'm not virtually meeting with them, but I was in-person meeting with them and look forward to doing that again. We've focused our, as you might imagine, working in covenants requires a significant amount of training and supporting the clusters by understanding their cluster standards is absolutely critical. The Covenant staff, specifically the advisors, really are the subject matter experts in cluster standards. And that's, and that's what they need to be in order to facilitate the education that's necessary with the cluster boards to help them to understand the process and what's necessary for, for effectively updating cluster standards. So we're working on developing and implementing really solid training program. And it's, it's, it's really, it's had an impact. Additionally, I should mention that when we talk about cluster outreach, we're obviously specifically focused on the clusters. But the condominiums are people too. And they have the same sort of issues in many ways that the clusters do. In the sense that they have standards that need to be developed, updated, and clearly understood and communicated. We have recently brought all of the condominiums into the portfolio of one advisor. He's our newest advisor hire, but he's already hit the ground running in terms of reaching out and establishing relationships with the condominium boards. And this ability to have one person be the point of contact for condominium boards has really helped us to, to facilitate offering that best customer service practices to our condominium owners. And finally, it just, the, the way that we've sort of structured this and, and it was really very nice to see at the beginning of the year when we were still able to have meetings with clusters is that I and the advisor, whoever's the advisor for a specific cluster, would set up meetings, go out into the community, contact cluster board members, and really try to establish that relationship where they would understand that the advisor is the point of contact for any member inquiries or requests. And I am the point of contact for the, the, the cluster board, but we are backup for each other. And it was my perception, the reality is, is that cluster outreach has unfortunately not been a priority for a while. And clusters at this point, cluster boards, they, it's, it's appreciated to have some handholding, it's appreciated to have some attention, some education, and somebody to really ask questions and, and try to understand what their needs are, whether it be for capital projects or what their needs are for understanding the cluster standard update project, helping them to identify which standards might need updating. And providing, structuring our staff and our, the, the way that we are interacting with cluster boards and the residents of their clusters in such a way that we can sort of provide a tag team level of support is really very effective. And I, we continued as, as well as we can telephonically and we've been able to do a, a really fantastic job. But I will look forward to, to really getting out and meeting people more when, when the restrictions are lifted. And to that end, another thing that we're focused on for the future is one of the perks that RESTIN Association offers clusters is that they have the ability to host one cluster meeting or event a year at an RA facility. So what we're looking to do is to remind them of that because many clusters aren't aware of that. And it is a significant perk. And additionally, when those meetings are scheduled, have staff attend. Because it's a, it's an, it's an excellent opportunity, again, to synergize, answer questions, and just put a face in front of staff's name, which I think is one of the most effective tactics for helping clusters to understand that we really do want to assist them and support them in any way that we can with whatever it is that they're concerned about at this time, but especially with regard to updating their standards. So that's sort of what we've been working on. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point or listen to any feedback you might have.
Are you ready to take a breath?
Yes, I'm desperate to, thank you.
We do have, since this is a, a meeting and we do follow parliamentarian procedures, I'm going to kind of do a go-round with all of our board directors and give them an opportunity to ask you some questions or comment. We'll give everybody at least one go-round and then we'll figure out if we need to go back around again. So first person up, I see on my screen is Ben Iyer. Ben, would you like to ask any questions of, of Megan? I know that this is an area that's been of special interest to you over the years. And I see you're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, so my questions are not aimed at Megan, it's really to the board and to the senior leadership and as well as Megan. But, you know, covenants and design rules are the number one reason why our members are not happy with RESTIN Association. So the last time I heard about this topic of community outreach, cluster coordination, and cluster standards updates was about a year ago in April of 2019. And then I have not heard anything since then until today. And before that, I heard was probably April of 2018, a year ago. And after that, didn't hear anything. So it's been relatively slow-going. It might look like digitizing the cluster standards is a big deal, but I think that should have been done 10, 20 years ago. So really what I want to understand is a committed approach to updating cluster standards. I would have liked to hear something like all cluster standards would be updated by the end of this year and on an ongoing basis annually they'll be revisited and updated. I would have liked to hear something to that effect. But what I heard was a little too less on the detail on how our 134 clusters, you're, you're to understand there are 134 clusters. Let's say each one have about 10 entities, by entities I mean storm doors, lights, doors, et cetera. Each one have about 100, 200 attributes, by that I mean color, size, length, width, mass. And if you want to take forever to update them, these 134 clusters is where our membership lives. The, there are customers or actually importantly for us to look at. This is where our association shareholders come in. And really, I haven't seen the leadership from the board or the staff to lead this kind of resolution of this matter. And I've been asking for, and I think the board should look at is having a working group. We have a working group for lakes, docks, you know, working group for anything that we want to put together, a hook road working group for, or a pony bond working group, which have $50,000 in budget for them, but we put a working group together for it. But I think a working group is important for this matter because it'll be a set of members from our clusters who are holding RESTIN Association committed to updating the standards. Because what Megan showed on our first slide itself is not a lot of clusters understand that they have to work with RESTIN Association updating the standards because that's how RA enforces it on them. And really, we want those checks and balances by the, by, through a working group that's established by the members that can actually hold us committed, the board and the senior leadership within RESTIN Association, to get this done. It's the number one reason of customer dissatisfaction. And because RA has committed to 100% member satisfaction, we want to make sure this gets addressed.
All right.
So I would like to hear what the board and the senior leadership has to say in that regard.
We will take under consideration, this was simply meant to be a snapshot of what specifically had been done on outreach. But I do think you bring up a number of great points, Ben. And I'm sure we can work with Hank and Cam, the new person, to, for information. There was a presentation last June that spoke about the department and its roles and whatever, and that was put in, into the Rock Box as well. Karen, I see your pictures up next, so I'm going to ask if you'd like to comment or ask any questions?
Yeah, I just want to say, um, thank you for this. It's, it's something that has been sorely needed and I am so happy to see the direction that this all is going in. It's a two-way street and, you know, there's clusters, some, some clusters are very responsible about what they get to RA and other clusters are not so much, so that's been a problem. Turnover in the department has been a problem, I'm glad to see the emphasis on training. I, I'm, I'm just very glad to see this all because as Ben mentioned and as we all know, this is, this is, um, this is a big source of member dissatisfaction. And if we can keep moving in this direction, I, I, I'm sure that things will improve greatly. Just a sort of a personal shout-out to you, Megan. We've had some occasion to communicate on some member issues recently. And I know you haven't been with us that long, but I, I, the, the quickness and way in which you respond to any issues is, is very impressive, so I'm glad you're with us.
You're on mute, Julie?
I'm on mute, Julie. Hi. Tom, you're up next, I see you next.
Okay. Megan, I would first say thank you very much for the information and your positive energy, that was great. I mean, I actually, sitting here at home, it's kind of funny to jump online and look up the standards for my cluster. Didn't even realize it was on there, so it's nice to know. Most of the, the cluster boards always have a member or two that they're dealing with who just don't maintain their property. And the frustration that I think a lot of cluster boards have is that they can't do anything to enforce it. And there's a lack of coordination between RA and those boards. And I guess maybe not a question for right now, but just going forward be, what, you know, what enforcement can RA provide those cluster boards? And what can they not enforce, what, what, what can they not provide? Because just knowing those two things, I think, would make the situation a lot better. And I will talk to you more in the future.
Thank you. Okay, Sarah.
Do we have four hours? So the purpose of this and I I, I know, Megan's been amazing. I sent her a three-page document yesterday with questions and she's already incorporated some in here. I want to just go back and touch on, you know, what Tom said about the enforcement a little bit if we could also look at the exceptions that a lot of the places have. And one, I'm, I put these in my comments to you, I just wanted the others to hear it. The other is a directory. Because that, I spent a lot of time during my campaign trying to get a complete directory. So just those areas, and I do look forward to working with you, it's been a pleasure so far, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. John Mooney. Miss, there we go.
I want to echo my colleagues, Megan, in thanking you for the excellent presentation. It, it was very clear and, and made good sense, thank you. One of the things that concerns me is as we, as our housing stock ages and as original materials become less available and replacement of those materials harder to find, I'm, I'm wondering how we can have, and I think this is kind of what Ben is asking, how we can have a good, effective dialogue involving DRB, the board, staff, and members, especially cluster rep, cluster officers, in trying to find the sweet spot between maintaining RESTIN's at least aspired design excellence and so the sweet spot between that and needed flexibility. So that's my question.
Okay. Um, one thing I'm, I'm, I'm going to interject here in the, just giving you all some guidance. We do have a resolution with regard to the liaison roles of the covenants and the DRB liaisons. And included in those specific duties are to present quarterly reports to the RA board on the activities of DRB and the covenants committee, to assist in development of methods to obtain member feedback on DRB and covenants committee processes, to co-host with the chairs of the DRB and covenants committee an annual joint meeting of the DRB, covenants, and RA board, to facilitate RA board required public hearings on proposed amendments to design guidelines and/or use and maintenance standards, and to help educate members on the role of DRB and covenants committees in, in our community. Underway are the planning steps to host that joint meeting between our board and the DRB board and the covenants committee. I think we're kind of targeting midsummer because the DRBs just had their first meeting with their new members. And so I do, I do expect that we are going to keep more informed about the activity. So I just wanted to interject that because I've already spoken to Karen as the covenants committee liaison and Tom, being one of the DRB liaisons and having a specific interest in this topic of community outreach and cluster outreach as well. So anyways, the next person I see up there is Bob Petting.
Thank you. Welcome, Megan. Is it Megan or Megan?
Megan. It's Megan.
Thank you. One quick question. Other people have touched on a number of issues, but how many, how many clusters have you been able to contact directly? I'm, I'm curious, because there are 134, it is, it is a, is a daunting task.
Can I answer?
Sure.
Okay. I, I don't have a number for you for exactly how many we've, we, we, clusters we've sort of touched since the beginning of the year. I, I did, I apologize, I'm sort of a nervous Nellie tonight. But I neglected to mention earlier that with, last year in 2019, we, there were 61 cluster standard updates that were approved. Thus far in 2020, we have received and reviewed 47 cluster standard updates. So that says to me that we're, we're So that says to me that we're, we're most likely doing something right with regard to both reaching out to clusters and also frankly, streamlining the process. So I I don't have a number right at my fingertips here for how many that we've talked to, but I I think, and honestly, our processes were a little bit disruptive with with regard to needing to to sort of bring everything virtually. But I I hear what you're saying and I and I think that my objective is to, at a minimum, touch every cluster, whether it's for a tree removal application or processing a complaint or talking about cluster standard updates at least by halfway through the year. And I I I think if I could sort of expand on that and and what what you're sort of getting at is, I I did just want to sort of respond to what Ben had said. And that is this, that I I I don't mean to make it sound like everything is puppies and rainbows. There, there is a serious problem with needing to update cluster standards and really, really help them to get it done. We are, we, the the cluster standards are largely so out of date that clusters themselves have sort of the institutional knowledge of how the process even works has been lost. So what my objective is, is as you mentioned, not only just to touch every cluster, begin that educational process that has become a necessary component of the process, but also to build the framework. I think that that is something that staff can commit to doing is is building the framework to make the process go, just go down as easily as possible and and frankly, as expeditiously as possible. And so that's what we have have, I I think, been able to do. And the numbers, I think, sort of, sort of bear that out. So I I hope I'm sort of answering your questions.
You are, thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, Erinus, your turn.
All right, thank you, Megan. In fact, you answered most of my questions preemptively. Because when I was on a cluster board, we were enthusiastic, but we had no idea what to do. We didn't even know which way we were facing. And so just a little reach out and and helping us, we kind of stumbled through trying to get the Hardy Plank approved instead of the T111. Because we had one of our residents that wanted to move forward with that, but we were lost in the woods. And so just reaching out and touching, you're going to find these clusters that are going to be hungry for a little bit of direction and they'll be happy to help. So great work, I like to see how well you're progressing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin, and Mike Collins.
Thank you, Megan, that was a great presentation. And I can tell you, you and your staff have been hard at work. Could you provide a little more detail on what you mean by the need to update standards? How are they out of date? What are we updating exactly? And then I I guess, the impression I got is that you need the clusters involvement, RA can't just do it for them. Is that right?
That's 100% correct. That, and honestly, the, 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 the lack of knowledge that that is the case is another obstacle that we face. This is not something that RA staff or the DRB can do for the clusters. We can make it as easy as possible, and that is what I am absolutely laser focused, what all of staff is absolutely laser focused on doing. But I I I'd just like to give you an example of something that we are encountering, the staff is encountering way more. And I know the members are encountering way more than they would want to. Let's say, for example, somebody goes to sell their home, they request the necessary disclosure documents and as such, trigger the resale inspection. And the resale inspection finds that the member needs to replace their roof and they need to repaint their siding. They would go to their cluster standards to determine the manner in which they need to make those repairs. And they would find that the shingles that cluster standards require them to use have been discontinued. And the paint that they need to use to repaint their house is no longer available. The company is literally out of business. That is a serious problem and that is, that is a, that is a inability for staff to provide the good customer service that we want to provide, that we strive to provide every single day. And if 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 we could wave a magic wand and just say, go ahead and do it, we would. But we can't do that, we need the cluster boards' help in getting that done. So that's a, that's a, and that's just on the resale end. When, when a, when a homeowner goes out, for example, one of the problems that we're very frequently encountering is that, I would say that about 85% of Reston's clusters, properties are roofed in asphalt shingles. It is one of my personal pet peeves that all of the clusters largely only have the older three tab shingles as a part of their cluster standards. Modern industry standard for for replacing roofing is using what's called architectural shingles. They have a higher wind rating, a longer warranty, anybody would want to put it on their roof. Well, if the cluster standards don't prescribe architectural shingles, a homeowner simply can't do it. And that's, that's, that's another serious problem. So that's sort of, that's sort of functionally where the 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 need comes in for updated cluster standards.
Got it, that's what I thought, I just want to confirm my understanding, thanks again.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Megan. We are now 25 minutes behind on our schedule. But I think that what you shared tonight, Megan, was well worth our time and gave us, as a new board, a foundation of where we've been and where we need to go. And we are very supportive and we look forward to the energy that Cam will bring as a new hire. And I know that that this is an area, Hank, that you've talked to us about, you know, over the last year. And as I recall, Megan, you just joined us, what, a year ago, less than a year ago?
Um, well, I was out for a little bit having my daughter, so it seems like it was just a year ago, but it was actually about a year and a half.
But in this outreach role, I think that was.
I started in the outreach role in February of this year.
Yeah, so congratulations on that.
Hey Julie, I I have to say something. I would, I would like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion for the staff to take all the directors' feedback into consideration and come up with a plan on how they're going to address community outreach and cluster standards update. Come up with a plan and metrics as to how they are progressing as per that plan and provide that to the directors every month before our board meeting. Because I don't want to wait another year before I get another update. And we, we might not need a working group, but I think the staff has to show us that and come up with these updates on a regular basis and resolve this. So that's, that's my motion, if somebody would second it, which is to take all the directors' feedback, create a plan and present before every board meeting to us. It could be an email or it could be a five minute presentation, whichever you want to choose. But it could be a simple email with how you're progressing as per the plan and what measurable metrics do you have that would show that we are achieving our plan?
Okay, if if someone wishes to second that, we'll we'll take Ben's motion and then I have a comment on perhaps a better way to approach that. Is there a second?
Oh, I second it.
Right, I'm first going to suggest that the way best maybe to handle this would be for us as a board to direct Hank and his staff to come back to us with a plan. And as part of Hank's regular comments to us, reporting on staff activity and his quarterly performance review on how he's hitting the metrics. And I believe that that this falls within one of the, both the strategic goal and Hank's performance goals that we could hold Hank accountable for he and his staff on that process. I don't, Hank, would you like to address that?
Can I add a comment? Julie, I know we talked about having a small few of us helping the staff or working together. I don't know if that would address.
Um, we're a managing board? I mean, we're a governing board, not a manager.
I still haven't found that anywhere in the documents, I'm waiting for that, but we talked even yesterday about a few of us, Tom, myself, you, I think we had Karen on the list, working with.
In in the conversation on this particular topic about the liaisons and how we're going to address and and ask for some things, yes, but it is an operations item. And I'd like to give Hank an opportunity to say how he might address Ben's motion in terms of activity. Like to speak to the motion, so Hank?
Yes, hi, hi everyone. First of all, I thought, Megan, you did a great job and tried to outline, outline a very challenging problem that we've been having. A lot of what's been implemented was initiated by Anna. And and this is, we're following Anna's planning with this as well. I don't disagree, we we certainly can put a plan together. I think the smart move would be to wait to our new directors on board, which will be June 1st, which is only, you know, a couple of weeks away. And try to have a a plan put together, at least a snapshot of a plan put together by the June board meeting. Make sure you're on agreement, how we want to move forward, and then we certainly can move forward from there. So if you all want to put a working group together, we certainly can can work with that, that prospect as well. I think, by listening to Van, that trying to move this thing along fairly quickly is really something a staff needs to do. And we certainly can get it done, but I would caution or or not caution, I would suggest, since we have a new director coming in to run the department, who also has experience with managing clusters and design board standards and all of that, that we, we let that person come on and help us put the plan together before the next June board meeting. That's, that's my recommendation.
Some observations for our full June board meeting might be in order. And I want to remind Hank that working group has a very specific meaning in in our organization. So we have, as Sarah mentioned, I have talked to you about us meeting with you on a, on a fairly regular basis, just kind of about this topic that's of high interest to a number of of our directors. And I think I'd mentioned that also last week in my statement to the board for my presidency. So I do think we've got enough interest to pursue this in the proper manner. I'd like to go around, if anyone has any particular comment they'd like to make on the motion before we take a vote on that motion, which I probably will ask for it to be restated for us before, before that. So Karen, I see you first. Nothing, Erin? Is that a yes, no, yes?
It appears that Director Mooney has a comment.
I'm getting to him.
Oh, okay.
I'll go to Jonathan next.
Thank you, Madam President. I I would support Van's motion with the understanding that we would indeed wait until Cam is in the saddle here in in June, as Hank has suggested. But also, I I have a problem with monthly reports. To me, that's too frequent. We want really in-depth reports, I think there should be no more than every couple of months, perhaps even every quarter. And that way, we would have a meaningful piece of information to digest. Thank you.
Okay, um, Bob?
Yes. I, I agree with the, and the reason I seconded the motion is because I believe this, this represents probably the single greatest membership concern, if you live in a cluster, that people are interacting with them and Megan is doing a great job in a matter of a couple of months, under trying circumstances. I would, I would agree with John Mooney that we probably could, you know, make it every other month or 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 quarterly as long as we see progress. And then we may have to ratchet up the the frequency of reports to to emphasize the importance of this issue to our membership. Thanks.
Mike Collins?
Kind of good, Ben, thank you for the motion, I think it's a, it's a great idea. I do concur that I thought monthly was a bit much and maybe we, you would, if you would accept a friendly amendment to make it a bi-monthly report, excuse me. And then the other was, I could live if we didn't see this plan until July, since a new person is coming in and maybe, you know, giving them only two or three weeks to come up with this plan might be a bit ambitious. So that's just my, my personal preference. And then thirdly, Megan, I just wanted to, you know, kind of address to you that, you know, there's a, the reason for something like this is, you know, one, accountability, because the board has ultimate responsibility for this stuff. But also so we can support you in your efforts. And I I hope that we can all work together, maybe not in a working group, but you know, kind of take the collective wisdom of of this body and, you know, pitch in where we can and and give you the resources and other support that you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, did you wish to comment any further?
I do, I, I agree with Ben, I support the motion. I would definitely just add that we don't want to get caught up in the terminology, but just like how for the PPP, we had a little quick emergency task force put together for the next day. We have directors here who've already expressed interest and we've had these conversations. It's, it will definitely be an add, a support team for Megan. And once again, I mean, you're going to hear from me regardless, so it might be nice to help you move it forward with a few of us. If, Ben, if that's okay with you, if you can add that, I completely support the motion.
What are you adding? We have a friendly amendment, bi-monthly, what was it that you wished to about adding?
The, the small group of.
We already have in progress, as you know, you and I have talked about.
Do we, we don't need a motion, any of that, we just go ahead with it?
That's, that's part of how we're operating as a board.
Okay.
So, okay, did I miss anyone? Threw me off my.
I I would just simply kind of follow up with what everybody said, Ben, I I I do think emotion's a good idea. The fact that Hank was and Megan and everybody else is ready to step up when the new person comes on board. And then we can adjust it a little bit, but the fact that we're actually focusing on this where it hasn't really been a focus is great. So since I'm the last one to follow through, that'll be it.
Okay, well, it's great to have gotten more staffing in covenants approved in the last year, so I think that certainly has helped us. Christina or Tony, can you possibly restate the motion?
I can restate the motion. Or if Tony wants to go ahead, that's fine. I made a couple of amendments to it based on some of the feedback I heard.
So the the issue is, and this is for the benefit of the new directors,
Yes.
who have been on the board before have heard me say, there's no such thing as a friendly amendment. An amendment is treated as kind of its own separate motion. So Mike Collins's amendment needs to be seconded and voted on. Otherwise, it fails and we continue under Ben's original motion.
I second.
Yeah, I'll formally move, I'll formally move to have bi-monthly reports and for the initial plan to be due in July.
Is there a second to his motion? Thank you, John, we take a vote on Mike's amendment? Anyone? Is there anyone who is not in favor of Mike Collins' amendment? I hear none and see none. Is that correct? So Mike's amendment passes, now we're back to Vens.
So as I understand the motion, the motion that Director Ira made was that staff incorporate the feedback that received tonight and come up with a comprehensive plan to notify or advise the board of steps being taken towards achieving the goal of 100% cluster outreach and for the first update to be due in July and then bi-monthly after that. 100% cluster outreach and for the first update to be due in July and then bi-monthly after that.
All right.
Yeah, plan and progress.
Okay. So take a vote. Is every, anyone, I'm going to do eyes because this is important. So Van, I assume you're an I. Bob, I.
I.
Sarah?
I.
Karen, I. Aaron, I. Tom, I. Mike, I. I don't think I missed anyone.
John, I.
Sorry, John. Didn't see your picture. Okay. So it carries, and I am an I. Right. Okay. I think we're done this particular topic. So we will move on. One thing that I missed doing at the very beginning was I welcomed all the board directors, but Hank, I neglected welcoming you, Tony, Larry, I saw Tom Deal on, on Zoom, I saw Laura, Sean, Chris, Michael, Mike Leon. And the very most important person to us, of course, is Christina. So I wish to, if I missed anybody, I'm sorry. But I do wish to welcome and acknowledge your support to us as we continue on this journey of how do we serve our members. With that, I'm going to move to item D, which is our current financial position, our budget projections and revenue impact. And coming right out of the gate as our treasurer, he's worked with Tom to give us our first treasures report. So that and then we'll turn it to Hank to fill out, fill in all the rest for us, okay? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Julie. I've got a report on the April financial summary, which you can find on page 35 of the board package. I'm going to keep it at a very high level. If you have any additional questions or concerns, I'll try to answer them and I've got Tom on the line and I think together we can answer them or we can get back to you as, as need be. Assessments, which represent the largest source of revenue to RA, have increased by 3% over the same period of 2019 to 15.16 million. Although all other revenue sources are down significantly since the outset of the pandemic. Not assessment revenues are down 46% over the comparable period in 2019. None of these are really, should be a major surprise, maybe the amount. Revenues for the three major recreational programs, camps, pools and tennis, largely represent prepayments for these services and programs. As the program schedules are amended or canceled, it is likely that a portion of these prepayments will necessarily be refunded to members. Future revenue will be adjusted accordingly in the months that, when the, when the refunds are made. Both functional and departmental expenses are down in direct correspondence to the impact of the pandemic. 19% for functional expenses and 18% for departmental. Certain operating expenses will not decline over the course of 2020 as they will for the recreational programs. Maintenance of the open spaces, lakes, paths, pools and tennis courts will require ongoing maintenance to preserve their condition going forward. The spend level on capital assets will also be maintained. The restoration and renovation of the Lake, Lake Anne Dock and the rebuild of the Lake Thoreau Pool are moving forward as budgeted. We are in the midst of those. We need to ensure their safe condition and availability for the coming years. Finally, currently RA has adequate cash reserves with which to weather the effects of the pandemic, given the steps that staff has recommended and will take over the remainder of 2020 to pair expenses, maintain RA assets and to prepare to return to full operations as soon as, as it is safe, healthy and practical. And if there aren't any additional questions, I'm going to turn it over to Hank, who's going to talk about the changes that had to be made to the budget. Are there any questions?
I have a question, Bob. This is Karen.
Yes, ma'am.
Um. I'm confused about the, on the monthly executive summary. The budget figure for assessments is $15,134,506.
Yes.
But the, the actual budget was 14, 942,290. I'm sorry, 14, 972,430.
That was, that's for 2019. The actual for the year is 15, 162?
No, the 2020 budget, okay.
Yeah, it took me a while to read through this too. I'm, I was not used to it.
I'm not getting it. Maybe I'm overlooking something obvious.
The, the, the column, the left-hand column under actual is the actual as of this April. Ending April 30th, the budget is the next figure and then Tom has included what the, what the actual number was as of April of 2019.
Understand. I'm just comparing the budget figure, the 2020 budget figure or the, through April budget figure to the 2020 budget figure and it's higher.
I'll answer that question. We've had a couple of properties come on board since we sent out the initial assessment invoices on 1-1.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. That, that explains it.
Madam President?
Yes?
I, I, I want to repeat a request that I made in, I believe, the last meeting or the meeting before that, that all of the financial reports we get be date stamped.
Yes.
That's really important. So everybody is assured that they're looking at the most current version. So I would really appreciate that. I think it's important for our work together. Thanks.
Um, do you think that's something you can help accomplish? Or Hank, I see you wish to speak.
Yeah, we'll make it, we'll make it happen.
Thank you. I think it's your turn now.
Okay, very good. Christina, can you get my slides up or tell me how to get my slides up on the, on the screen?
Sure. So if you would like to do it, you can go down to the bottom and do share screen.
Share screen, got it.
And then find the document.
How about, so I don't get lost? How about if you do it?
Okay.
Thanks.
Can you see it?
Yeah. Do I have control of it or do you have control of it?
No, I would have control.
Okay, that's fine. I'll just tell you when to move it forward. Thank you. We'll go, we'll go through this first couple fairly quickly and then we'll get to the, the projected forecast. I just wanted to share this first page because we are, the reason we're making these adjustments or talking about this new forecast has to do with COVID-19 updates and we're pleased to be able to announce that Mike and his team were able to get the COVID-19 webpage up. So that's why it's the first, first slide on, on the deck. So could you go to the next, next slide, please? This is just some basic detail information about assessments. I'm not going to go through every line here. But we did indeed bill or invoice over $15 million for assessments. And here's the breakdown. You, you basically have over 17,574 individual members that got invoiced $708. And that number shows up. There were 25 apartment complexes that got invoiced for the amount of 27, 2.7 million plus. 23 of those apartments have paid in full, two have elected to go on installment plans. Basically, as of April 30th, about 14,000 or about 80% of our RA members had paid in full. The individual members had paid their assessment. There's the total there. About 1,500 of RA members have either elected to go on the installment plan or were pre-qualified for tax relief. And the amount of money, the expense, can you sit back and I'll draw the screen for me? There you go. There's a little bit over $460,000 in payments that came in through there, there. So going down to the, the, the couple of bullets down below that, one of the issues that's still standing out is about 12% of our members, even after we've given two grace periods at the end of April 30th, about 2,120 individuals or 1,200 folks still haven't paid their assessments. And so when you add that to some of the outstanding dollars that, that are still there for the installment plan, right now, as of the 30th of April, there's still about $1.8 million outstanding assessments we're, we're looking to bring, bring back in. Can you go to the next slide, please? Okay, this, this shows a little bit differently and I know, I don't know if everybody's got their images up on the right-hand side, but that's kind of blocking a little bit of, of the slide, but it's a comparison of where we are in 2030 versus where we were in the same timeframe at the end of, you know, April 30th, 2019. Kind of interesting to point out that if you can look at where in the blue line where it says full assessments versus partial payments, there has indeed been an increase and I, I obviously has to do with the pandemic of the number of folks that have requested to go on installment plan. It's up about, you know, a little over almost 400 folks. The other thing that's also interesting to point out is that at the end of April last year, we had more than 200, 2,245 households that were still outstanding versus this year, which is we have about 2,120 households that are outstanding. The dollar amount is different, meaning there's a greater number than last year. I think it's blocked on your screen. There's a greater number by about $650,000 of outstanding dollars to still be, be invoiced. So while it sounds like it's a large number of folks, it's a little less than last year that, that are still outstanding in their payments. And there's a process that the folks go through at Reston, you know, they get a notice, they get encouraged to call, you know, call in the fiscal department, work out some sort of payment plan. So that's kind of where we are. But as Bob pointed out, we are, we're in a good cash position right now with, with the revenue that we've gotten to come in. But this is the background of where we are with assessments. Next slide, please. Um, one of the key reasons that we're having to, you know, look at a, a new forecast for the budget obviously has to do with COVID-19 and this chart that I think Laura sent out yesterday it, it basically, it's, it's a, you, you all should have this. I think it was emailed to every, every board member yesterday. This is in two slides just so that it wouldn't get too small to read. This is really was causing us a, a lot of, a lot of challenge with our planning. This is the governor's phase system is of quote unquote getting us back to normal. We, the, the majority of the state just left what is called phase zero last Friday. Although we in Northern, Northern Virginia and certainly in Fairfax County remain in phase zero. It's until I believe that we're scheduled to get out of it next Friday, which is May 29th. And then we would enter into phase one and these are these steps defines what you're allowed to do. Whether, you know, social distancing is being enforced, whether it's actually you're staying at home or it's safer at home. How many people can gather in any one place and, and there's a lot of detail to it. It's also somewhat confusing. It's not necessarily totally definitive for organizations like ours. And, but if you look down below that, each of those columns, we have looked at what we can keep open, what we, what we need to close. And, and in some of the places where we have questions, if you go to the next slide, please? For example, you know, it, it talks about the swimming pools. We don't know how, how, how or when they can actually be opened. We don't know when phase two is actually going to be implemented. It could be, because each of these phases are, are basically defined by the governor and his office of taking two to four weeks potentially. Northeast, Northern Virginia is also behind the rest of the state. So there's a, there's a lot of question marks about what can and can't be done. So this led us to, to having to make some really hard decisions and, and look at the new forecast for the budget. Could, could you go to the next slide, please? This basically shows the forecast that's in, that we, we updated and put in your packet a couple of days ago. One of the things that happened is that thi- this slide presentation's been worked on up until, you know, just a couple of hours before the meeting and will be made available for everybody after the meeting. But what also happened is one of the local media sources basically broadcast that we were shutting down camps. When we really wanted to have that conversation with, with all of you before any decisions were made, we got a lot of feedback from parents thanking us that we were cutting down, shutting down camps. They were feeling uncomfortable because well over 1,000 parents had already signed up their children to, to participate in the camps despite the fact we didn't know when we could offer them. Based on, on what I just showed you on the phased of bringing us back to normal. So consequently, we had to update this budget and send it out a couple of days ago where we literally had to remove all revenue from camps. The yellow column is the column we're going to be working from. That's the forecast we believe makes the most sense. Also, when we were working on the PPP loan that we had received and ultimately turned, turned back in, there was a request that we put in worst case scenario. That's what the red column is and, and if there's any questions about that going forward, Tom certainly can answer it. But we did put a schedule of assumptions and I have notes associated with the yellow column. And to make this kind of easier, what we did is divide the, the next three slides into the revenue side, the expense side and the capital side. And we'll, we'll be answering or addressing where we think we're going to be seeing shortfalls in the revenue and where we're going to make adjustments in the expenses. So could you go to the next slide, please?
Hank, somewhere in this segment agenda, could you progress the PPP situation and?
Sure. One of, one of the things we were concerned about, and that's one of the reasons I showed you the assessment side of things, is as we were going through the assessment process, we were finding that folks were struggling and rightly so during, during the pandemic and with folks being concerned about their jobs, a whole host of reasons, that assessments were coming in. And that's why we extended it, gave a grace period twice and you all thankfully voted for that. During that process, the, the CARES initiative was put out and where they, they had the, the, paycheck protection program as part of it where organizations and they, they, they tried to define them and, and we at one point in time thought that we qualified for it, suggested that you could apply to offset payroll, the expenses you're having and, and for a certain length of time during that, that loan that the, the actual, all the money that would be used could be granted to you, be actually forgiven. So it was almost like applying for a grant. It literally was applying for a grant or appeared to. We did indeed apply for it. We were awarded it. And then it was pointed out that later the rules got clearer and it, it, it looked like we weren't qualified for it and that the government really didn't have, really didn't fully understand what they were, were suggesting and the penalties associated with accepting it could be pretty, pretty substantial. So with the help of, of Bob and others, we, we reached that conclusion and basically we're, you know, unrequested the, the, the loan and it went back without any penalties. So, but the, the purpose of trying to, to get the loan was one, it, we, we thought we were going to be in a worse position than, than we currently are when it came to assessments and getting the, the revenue that, that we had planned for. I hope that answers the questions about the PPP. If we, if we to kind of go down through some of the line items, the, the purple column, the first column where it says 2020 budget is the budget in which, that was approved and in which we've been operating from. The worst case scenario budget was added late last week. The worst case scenario budget was added, uh, late last week at, uh, the request of several board members during a meeting. Um, but the, the, the column that we really want to focus on and that, that we're addressing and, and believe thinks is the, the realistic scenario. Is, uh, where it says, uh, amended twenty twenty budget and that's just the, the term, this is a forecast. It's not, uh, not that we're asking, uh, for an amended budget at this, this point. We're just sharing you where you think, we think the revenue is going to be, where we think the expense side is going to be. So if you kind of go down through this line, uh, line item, I, I, at the, at the bottom of this, we tried to, to, to make it clear with some of these, uh. These, uh, landing points for revenue that comes in, what they actually mean. So communications and advertising. Um, one of the numbers that's in there is, uh, has to do with sponsorship. Um, I think as all of you are aware, um, non-assessment revenue, uh, and generating new non-assessment revenue. Has been a big, uh, initiative of the board ever since I, I've been with the organization now a little over a year. Um, and so looking at generating, uh, non-assessment revenue, especially if it could be done through. Corporations or businesses that want to sponsor a variety of things, whether it's an event or. In, in, in one situation, we had a, a group that was willing to sponsor the conference center and actually use it for, um, conferences. Um, we had budgeted, uh, about two hundred thousand dollars in that category and we're, we're looking, that category is looking pretty strong. Uh, right now, we, with basically what's happened, uh, and all these other businesses, uh, having to struggle on their own. Uh, we see that not hitting that mark in any way, shape or form. And basically the, the thought is it's going to be, uh, we're going to be about fifty thousand, um, in sponsorship, which is already dollars that are already coming. And, and for the most part, so we're seeing, uh, uh, deflation of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that line item. Uh, moving, moving further down, a lot of people would ask the question, what's administration and member services? What, what's revenue there? It's not showing any decline, but just so you know, that, uh, has to do with a conference room rental as well as, uh. W- when you go into our member services, uh, um, um, office in the, the main floor, the, the headquarters, that's where we also sell items. So that line on if you're questioning what's, where's revenue coming through there, it has to do with sales in the member services offices. Um, but moving further down, the covenants administration and design, uh, revenue, again, that's not showing a loss at this point in time. But that's revenue associated with, um, um, POA. Uh, all the things that we do that, that support the sale of homes and things like that, that generate, uh, it does indeed generate some revenue, uh, through the covenants. Uh, office, that's where that gets parked. Uh, but the next line item that's showing, uh, about a seventy-six thousand dollar, seventy-seven thousand dollar. Shortfall is, uh, Walker Nature Center. Um, that's where, and that's primarily, uh, camp tuitions. As well as rentals that we're not going to be able to offer, uh, this year. Um, moving further down, it says camp summary and that is seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Um, basically, um, and, and I believe I sent you all an email outlining why camps have to be, be canceled at this point in time. Um, and it all has to do with the unknowns. It has to do with, even if we knew that we could offer camps. Um, what would they be like? Are we responsible for, uh, testing both the staff and the children every day? Uh, what if someone does indeed show up and, and, and has, uh, COVID nineteen? Do, does everybody have, then have to be quarantined? The, the answers, um, there's just no answers to it and, uh, the dilemma is very, very, uh, significant. And unfortunately, uh, the summer camps for the rest of the season, uh, are going to be, uh, are, need to be, uh, canceled. Um, lakes, ponds and streams, that, uh, it's about, it's not a huge amount of money. It's about six thousand dollars. Uh, that is money that comes in through boat registrations, but also boat rentals that, that we do at Lake Anne. Um, and any stream mitigation money that comes in, that, that's what gets, um, parked there. The majority of that money, the majority, the, the, just roughly just under six thousand dollars is, um, from, um, what we believe is going to be a slow start. Or no start to being able to have our, um, our rental fleet at Lake Anne this summer. Um, I also just included natural areas because people ask me that from time to time. Why is there a hundred dollar, uh, line item in that? And those are literally donations, uh, roughly annually, it averages out to be about a hundred dollars folks donate. In order to, uh, support some of the activities that we do on our trails and in our, in our forests. Um, moving down recreation, um, areas and grounds maintenance. It's, uh, really not, uh, showing any, uh, uh, any, uh, offset just yet. Mainly because, a lot of people have asked me, why not? That has to do with, uh, ball fields and pavilion rentals, but for the most part, it has to do with the V dot, uh, contract. That we have for mowing the median strips. So, um, that really, that line item, we're not seeing or projecting, uh, much change in. Um, because most of the money there has to do with the V dot mowing contract. Community buildings is, is what they are. It's the rental of like Brown's Chapel, the Glade Room and that sort of thing. And we're seeing that go down by, uh, just under twenty thousand dollars. Uh, aquatics is, is what it is. It's the, uh, the, the pools and the programs that we run through the pools, including pool passes. And that's about, uh, just under four hundred thousand. Um, tennis and pickleball, uh, this is primarily, uh, lessons and, and, uh, and tennis passes. We are hoping that we will be in a position to open tennis, uh, as we go into phase one. And there is a plan to do so, um, that keeps in mind social distancing. Um, but we are waiting to see, uh, to confirm that, um, phase one is going to be implemented next Friday. So that's our, that's our, uh, game plan. That will, besides all of the paths and, and, and things that are already open. The next thing that we are planning on opening to the public as soon as we, we believe we have the green light is the tennis facilities. Um, events and senior programs, uh, we're seeing a, a reduction there of about thirty-nine hundred, thirty-nine thousand dollars. Roughly forty thousand dollars and that is just events and programs we do for our seniors, uh, whether it's a road trip or bringing an event in. And so we see that revenue off, uh, significantly as well. Lake House, uh, rentals are, uh, Lake House has been asked to be a separate line item. And we do have had, already had some rentals this year. We do believe that towards the end of the year, we will, we'll still get rentals back. So right now it's only projecting, um, from what was a budget of about a hundred and fifty thousand. We're projecting about a forty, uh, fifty thousand dollar, uh, shortfall there at this point in time. And then the, uh, the land use, people always ask what, what is that? And that's proffer for all the proffers that we have. That's the, the line item there. And so that's not going to go down, uh, it's going to stay, uh, stable. So if you add all this together, what we're looking at, um, and what we believe is reasonable, um, is a, uh, basically a budget. Uh, a forecasted revenue shortfall of about one point six, one point seven million dollars. So it's, the actual number is one million six hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. So does anybody have any questions before I go on to expenses on the revenue side?
All right, now. All right, I've got my, my, um, pictures of you all up again. So, um, do, is there any, uh, questions? I, I personally have one. You mentioned about tennis, uh, opening up a bit more. And as soon as we can, I know we've gotten a lot of, um, emails and, and interest and traffic on that particular point. Could you speak, um, to that or is that on a later slide about what, what, um, or how we might go about that?
No, we're, we're, um, and, and Laura's on the line, so if I get anything, uh, uh, not exactly precise. And she will correct me and, and join in the conversation. Um, we are looking at, uh, how to open up our tennis facilities. Um, in a way that would keep social distancing in mind, but, uh, and that will, would involve, for example. Um, opening the, the tennis courts, but where possible, every other court, the tent, the, uh, net would be lowered. So that you, you, there would be a, a huge space, a, a significant space between each court. Um, and that would just be for initially, initially as we open up phase two. Um, there is a plan on what courts would be open first. Not all of them would be opened. The ones that are, uh, you know, would work best would be opened. Um, and we'd also remind the tennis community that it's up to them to follow the rules. Because while we can establish and outline what the rules are, um, our, you know, our community is, is very adamant. About making it clear and notifying the police who are, have enforcement responsibility when groups are not following those rules. And, um, we, the, our intention is to, that, and, and we believe that the tennis community will indeed follow the rules, which will be posted. Which will be things like keep social distancing, please don't pick up other folks', uh, tennis balls, you know, things like that. Um, uh, the gates will be open, locked open so that people aren't, you, you having to open and close the gates. There will be sanitation. Um, you know, uh, sanitation stations where folks can, um, you know, keep their hands disinfected. There will not be, um, porta potties on restrooms. They're not a, a part of being open during phase, uh, phase one. Um, but that's in general what, what we're looking at and, uh, we're following the, what other work, uh, what other communities are, are proposing to do. Laura and her team are well-connected with the Parks and Recs community throughout, um, um, northern Virginia and actually throughout the country. And, uh, we're learning, uh, and, and finding out what they're doing and what, what are some of their best practices that they're planning. And that's what they're looking to implement.
Appreciate that. Um, Laura, do you feel you wish to add anything or can I go on to the directors to see?
Um, the only thing I would add is that, uh, we are also very closely following the United States Tennis Association. And USA Pickleball Association Guidelines. That's, uh, that has really driven the decisions that we've made. And as soon as we can bring additional, uh, facilities online, we will start with a small subset. And then we will work quickly to open the remaining facilities, um, as, as quickly as we can. I, I just want to remind everyone that, you know, we have not had our full staff complement in and working, um, seasonals have not been in. And so that will, that has impacted, we're working to get these facilities ready for phase one. And then as soon as we can get people onboarded, uh, trained and oriented to what the new environment looks like. Um, then we will open the gates and welcome everybody in and I hope to see a lot of people out playing while social distancing.
Appreciate that. So back to, uh, Hank's question to us, do we have any questions on what he's presented thus far? And I'm going to start with John Mooney. You're on mute if you have any questions.
Julie, I have no questions. Thank you.
All right, um, Bob, between?
Uh, yes, could, could we go back to the PPP loan for just a, a moment? Um, I was, um, I was looking through the approvals, uh, in the, the minutes. And, uh, I didn't notice, uh, as was the case when you, when the board cancels its board meetings. And, uh, committee meetings that there was a, uh, of, an email vote, a consent vote. To, to go after the PPP loan. Uh, could you bring, bring us up to speed on how that, how that, uh, occurred?
Well, sure. Go ahead. We're, we're going to say something, Julie?
Um, I simply was going to say that, you know, as you stated earlier, you know, when the PPP came out. We understood the guidelines to be certain that it, it appeared we would, um, be able to be considered. And, um, so in, trying to get out of the gate early, yes, we did a unanimous consent, um, the, they proceed. But Hank or Tom, if you want to address anything further on that?
Was, was that by email vote? I'm just, I'm just curious because all of, all the other votes have been in the packages and that one I didn't see. So I'm just, I'm asking.
Um. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't recall that that was actually a board vote as I'm thinking back on it.
I don't believe it was, Julie.
Was it?
I don't believe it was.
I don't believe it was either, as I'm thinking back on it. I remember scrolling through my package and seeing a bunch of emails, which I, uh, I assume maybe that had covered it. But, um.
Julie, I think, uh, Hank's email said he did not need a board vote according to Tony. Maybe Tony can tell us more.
That's what I was thinking as I re.
Yeah, we, we can, we can explain. We, um, the, the co, uh, the CARES Act was made aware to us. And we were, we were told that we could apply for it. Uh, Tom did some research, folks as a folks. And so we applied for it, not knowing whether or not we would get the, get it. Once we did indeed receive, um, notification that we qualify, that according to the bank, we qualified for it. Um, I went and shared it with Tony to see, do we have the authority to move forward with this? And I, I was told at the time that yes, we did have authority to move forward with it and that I was to notify all of you. Once we had received it, which I did, um, and then, um, basically, you know, Bob, you looked at it. And some others looked at it in a little bit more detail and said, well, you know, this could, could create a bit of a challenge for us. Because the, you know, the government doesn't seem, that we, government seems to say that five oh one C fours don't qualify. Yet we were approved through the bank, uh, because we were a C corp, I believe.
Right, that was the case.
Yeah, so basically we applied to see if we would get it. Um, and once we got it, uh, we then brought it to the board's attention.
Okay.
All right. Yes, I'm sorry, Bob, my memory, you know, in that month, month of March, April, but, you know, there was a lot of stuff going on. So.
I'm asking as, as it be.
It was not an email unanimous vote by the board. There wasn't a need for the board to step in at that point.
Okay, um, Ken. Well. I, I do, I'm, um, no, I'll, I'll, let me, I'm, I'm big, um, trying to get it out. Uh, let me, let, let other people speak and then if they have any questions, I'll, I'll come, come back to me if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, um, Sarah, I see you are not on mute. Would you like to comment? And then I'm going to go to Ben next and give him a little bit of time to get off mute. So Sarah.
Um, I just.
Any questions on Hank's?
I do, I have, I don't really have questions. I have a request and another, um, uh, question for Tony. Uh, request is, is there anywhere we can get these, uh, documents put on the Dropbox, um, ahead of time? Or, um, and shared with the membership? Because we've had a few members comment that they don't have it in mind. Um, it would be beneficial if they had it. The other is the question for Tony. Um, can you elaborate on the, uh, the policy? As far as voting for a loan, just a little brief recap if you can.
Hello? Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Pursuant to the bylaws, the CEO is charged with, um, safekeeping of the monies and the financials for the association. There is no specific resolution or governing document that states that a unsecured loan. Must be brought before the board to encumber the association. The difference between an unsecured loan and a secured loan is obviously, a secured loan has a piece of property top to it, which would require a vote. The documents are completely silent as an unsecured loan. So since the CEO is charged with, um, being the financial steward for the association. Hank was well within his rights to, uh, seek to do this, uh, loan. It was the understanding that once the loan was achieved, um, a discussion would ensue with the board as to what are we going to do with it? But at the time, due to the urgency, um, as you recall, uh, the SBA ran out of money the first go around. Uh, the decision was made to just go ahead and apply for it and see where we landed.
Thank you, Danny.
Okay, so, um, did you have something else? Otherwise I'm going to go to Bob and see what his comment was with the, go into materials. Um, some of this, you know, it, it was questioned whether or not it was in our package. I am looking at it and yes, the basic structure, Hank's slide is in our package. Um, certainly they updated it with, um, the information that we got, um, with regard to the camps. Um, the variance summary, I don't see that, but, um, we can certainly make sure that. They match what we, uh, have tonight matches with what is available to the public. So I'll just comment on that. Bob?
Um, I was going, it, I find, I find it bothersome. And I understand the, the, the circumstances in which you found yourself. But, um, I think that the board should have been. Yeah, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I would have appreciated an understanding that the, that we were going after a sizable loan. Because you had to, you had to apply for a specific amount. And that's, that's my concern is that. Once we. And that's, that's my concern is that, um, once we, once any company starts borrowing, it, you kind of get into that mode kind of continuously. And I think the board should have been apprised and weighed in on whether that was something that they needed to do.
All right, um, I do recall some conversations about appraisal to the officers, but, um, but I do hear your concern about loans and that's part of why we're doing this review tonight is to make sure that we all have.
If, if I could just comment on that, I, I will tell you that the leadership of the past board asked us specifically if we were going to be going after any of the CARES money and had we applied for it. So, you know, I know you weren't on the, the board when this took place, but the leadership of the board did indeed ask, uh, ask me in my office, are we going after this? And if not, shouldn't we? So we, we applied recognizing that it's basically, was it a loan where I think the first eight weeks was going to be forgiven? It could be paid back with no penalty at, at any time whatsoever. And it was a 1% loan that was being offered to save businesses. So it's not like we're going out to banks and borrowing money willy, lilly, nelly or trying to. We were in a, in a, in a, in a fairly evolving situation. And we applied for a loan to see if we would even qualify to get it. It was only after the fact that we learned that the banks weren't really doing all the prequalifications that the Small Business Administration was. And we were shocked at the, at the time that they had basically, uh, said that we would qualify for the, the size loan when we did. We thought it was going to be closer to a couple hundred thousand dollars. And a lot of other nonprofits and businesses have applied for those loans. Several of them have elected to give them back for similar reasons that we have. Because the government doesn't seem to have its act together on it. But it's not, not as if we just went on our own trying to, to break some rule. It was a, it's a very fluid situation and circumstances that we, we found ourselves in. We approached to apply for a loan, to then bring it to the board to see if the board wanted to accept it.
All right, Aaron, any comments thus far?
Don't have any, thank you.
Ben, any comments thus far?
Yes, so let me address a few things. Overall, I think the PPP is a good thing. You, you have to be a small business owner to understand the importance of PPP. And you have to be somebody who is holding on to a job thanks to PPP. However, I, what I think is not okay is the continued practice of the staff making decisions or not keeping the board completely apprised, as well as the fiscal committee completely apprised. Because I too do not need to, for example, speak to many folks that I bounce my ideas off. And if I had nine board members, if I had a fiscal committee, I would like to bounce my ideas off of them and get their understanding and approval and review. Because think about this, instead of you, the staff facing all these hard questions, you could have been in turn asking the board or the fiscal committee the questions. Hey, why did you guys approve the PPP or ask us to go after it when we were not eligible to go after it? So this is a hard lesson and something for you to understand that in future, to always keep the fiscal committee and the board. I say the fiscal committee because I think the fiscal committee has a much more 360 view of what's going on in fiscal matters and they have the ability to go in and understand these fiscal matters to be able to advise the board as well. So that's what I think about what happened with the PPP. The question I have about the slide that's on here is from what I understand is this is the worst case considering that COVID affects it just as it has in the past couple of months for the rest of the year. And with the understanding that we are going to be fully staffed for the rest of the year. So it is truly the worst case. But what I would like to understand is certainly common sense tells us that that's not going to be the case, right? If we are not going to have our camps or aquatics generating any revenue, therefore they are not going to be optimally or fully staffed, which means that we won't be spending as much money on it and therefore the expenses can be reduced. And a lot of this could have been analyzed if we did have a fiscal committee meeting earlier this month, which we did not have. I, I do hope that before our next board meeting, we do have it because it's been three months that we've had. And the numbers that we are seeing is not from actuals, from what I understand, or, or forecasts of what we could expect based on what's going on. So that's quite a few thoughts, but I just wanted to share it with the board.
Appreciate that, Ben, and, and I think counsel is well taken. I know that the last couple of months have been very dynamic in terms of us being able to both meet and keep abreast and, and all the changes that were, that they've done. Like I said, what's in the package tonight is, you know, one, one variation behind what Hank showed us based on the camp decision. But Mike Collins? Any questions thus far? You're on mute if you're talking to us. I'm going to skip Mike and go to Tom because I know Tom's on and he's not on mute.
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Last time from Mr. Collins, do you wish to ask any questions at the moment of the package thus far? Hank, I hand the, um, Tom back to you. Is this it for the financial piece of the agenda?
No, let's, uh, we're going to go on the expense side to show how this, we, we are projecting balancing this. So Christine, if you go to the next slide, please. So the first, the first slide, as I told you, we divided, so, so you could read it. We divided it from the expense side, which was, we just showed you now, I'm sorry, the revenue side. Now we're showing you the expense side. And again, it's kind of the salmon color on the left-hand side versus 2020 budget. That's the, was the budget that was approved. And on the yellow column is what we're working with. And I'll just go quickly through this. A lot of the, right now, we are not, not proposing or projecting laying off any full-time employees or furloughing anyone. What we have are about nine, nine vacant positions that we are looking to take our time in hiring, mainly, mainly because it was, was saving us some, a significant amount of money by delaying the hires. And that's reflected on the, the budget savings. As well as there is, I believe, 231 seasonal positions we will not be filling. And that's also saving us a significant amount of payroll. But kind of going down the, the line items here where it says computer support. All of these savings were discussed with and basically approved by the department heads. So the IT department looked at our internet costs and contracts and, and service and felt that they could, they could reduce that by about $17,000. Tech support, uh, they thought they could reduce that contract by about $70,000 and delayed hires on a couple of new positions. And I believe those delays were to be postponed until late, and, and late, early fall or, or fall, early fall, September to October timeframe. So that, that brought that number to about $230,000 in savings. We looked at operational costs and decreasing overall operations payroll wise by about $214,000. In covenants, there is, uh, we, we are indeed filling the director's position. That'll be June 1, but there's several other open positions that were delaying those hires until I have this correct. In covenants, we're looking to delay until, uh, July and early August on a couple of vacant positions. And that would basically save us about $115,000. Basically, supplies and materials for camps as well as seasonal staffing at the Walker Nature Center will, will reduce expenses over there by about $47,000. The camp, some camp, uh, staffing, supplies, rentals, things that we have to do with that, all associated with the camps will reduce our expense, our budgeted expense by 464,000. Recreation and park, recreation and grounds maintenance, those are a lot of the folks over at Central Services Facility. Seasonal staff, we're not going to bring on. And some of the overtime for regular staff is being reduced. So that'll save about 60, about 94,000. Aquatics, um, you know, we're looking at decreasing what they call fixtures, which are adding equipment or things that needed to be done to one of the, the 15 facilities, as well as the majority, however, is in, uh, in payroll. And that's about 352,000. Tennis, decreasing some of the staff, giving private lessons, things like that that have already taken place and will continue to take place. So we're looking at a little bit over 50 to $60,000 there. Events and senior programming, again, decreasing the cost of events, the seasonal staff associated with that. That's about 35,000. When this is all added up, it, it basically comes to $1,672,000 worth of savings, which balances out against what our forecasted loss in revenue is going to be. So, so anybody have any, most of it is in labor. And, and both seasonal labor, delayed hiring of current vacant positions. At this point in time, we're not forecasting having to let any permanent full-time staff be furloughed. So any questions about the expense side? We can, we can move on to the next, it's pretty quick and then we can come back if there are questions. If you go to the next slide, please. This just shows basically how all this, all those dollars roll into a surplus. And that surplus rolls into what we call the triple RF and the CARF fund. And so in both scenarios, if you look at where it says 2020, the kind of the salmon color, it, it shows that there would be a surplus of 3,335,000. Under the yellow budget where it says amended 2020 budget, it shows the same surplus. That thing gets rolled into our, our triple RF. And I put a backup sheet behind this for all of you, especially the new folks of the board who may not understand what a triple RF, which is Repair Replacement Reserve Fund. And this is a fund that is, that is managed internally by Chris and is for repair and replacement of existing assets. And that is on a, a regular schedule. And it's on a rolling average or about a 10-year rolling average. And the backup page explains all of that. And then it's also rolls into what is called CARF, which is your Capital Assets Acquisition Reserve Fund. Basically, the purchase or new things. So if you kind of roll all this together, you see that, um, basically we have done nothing or changed nothing in the capital side of things. We have the same surplus that that gets rolled into allowing Chris to do his, his work with both the triple RF and the CARF dollars. So, um, basically what we're projecting is, uh, you know, controlling expenses based on where we see the, the revenue going to be and then not having any impact at this point in time on, uh, you know, our repairs and replacement for our reserve fund or our, our CARF, which is a minimal amount at this point in time. So that's kind of where we are. And I could field any questions you all might have concerning what we're forecasting and how we, we believe it's going to play out the rest of the year.
Any questions?
Yes, a quick, a quick question on, on the pools particularly. I think if, if I, if I heard you correctly, they could potentially open, um, on a, on a restricted schedule, if I remember correctly, four to five pools. Have, since, since, and, and please, if I'm wrong, uh, tell me. Since everything, virtually everything is done on a, on a pass basis. It, it seems like the, the, the pools are still going to generate, you know, about revenues about 50,000. Wait, excuse me, I'm sorry, looking at the wrong, I'm looking at the worst case. How, how, how was that factored in? Or do we have a, a sense of, uh, is that, is it just based on pool passes? Or is it based on usage or just exactly how does that? How does that get factored into the budget?
Yeah, it's, it's fact, it's factored in with the, and Laura, if I, I get these, these, this wrong, you're going to have to jump in. We believe that at a, at a minimum, we're going to be at a point where we can have four to five of the pools open. It really depends again, when the phased, the, the governor's phased, phases are lifted and when Fairfax County allows it to be, be lifted. And so it's, we're looking at revenue from at least four or five pools for starting potentially in the very, very early. So I, I don't think it's possible with late, late July. Yeah, why don't you chime in, Laura?
Okay, um, the, the pools are really fluid and I'm, I'm sure that some of you have seen news from other localities that have also begun closing and cancel their, their summer seasons. And part of that is there's, you know, the big unknown with what we can. We do have some CDC guidelines. And so now taking that and putting into practice is what staff is working on coming up now that those have been released to see what's feasible and what's not. So the numbers that, it was sorry, and then the second thing is, you know, in terms of timing, you know, when, when can we open? And when, when will that phase be and how far off does that push? So as this continues to change and evolve, at the time that we pulled these numbers together, this was based on the current revenue that we already had. And then also looking at the calendar year of how many more days the facilities might be open. So, you know, it, it, it truly will, will continue to change. With tennis courts opening and we have, our recreation passes for members include both members and non-members. And that revenue is shared between aquatics and tennis. So for, with opening tennis, that will, you know, hopefully sustain. And, you know, maybe if that is one of the only options that's available, we may see a few more, a little more revenue in that category. And then as, you know, we learn more about pools, we'll continue to make adjustments every month. Does that help director?
To, it kind of, thank you, Laura, but it triggers two, two questions, I hopefully. One is, would you, would you, are you considering cutting the, 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 the cost of the pass? Or would it be at its present, at its present level? And then secondly, you mentioned four or five pools, so they'd be the same four or five pools or would you do it on a rotating basis? I know there's a kind of.
Great.
Questions, but.
So for the, the specific pool facilities, those were, you know, we're looking at the schedule of the facilities that we have brought online that are kind of ready to open. We do have some facilities that we have repairs that need to be made. And we have to talk just with those repairs being, being able to be executed based on the supply chain, based on getting approvals through meetings such as DRB. You know, there's, there's some timing issues with that. So we'll have to look at that specific schedule and then look at maximizing the hours. You know, right now with the governor's orders, it looks like it's really only for one person per lap lane. So look at a facility that has six lanes, that's only six people. And, um, you know, how, how do you do that? So we really are just in the middle of pulling that information together. For the recreation passes, um, you know, we're hopeful that with tennis that, you know, because, you know, there was a delay, we're not looking at modifying or giving a proration right now. And for, for pools, we will absolutely have to make adjustments for the, the members and customers. As, you know, as, as we start to. As, you know, as as we start to make decisions. I will say it seems people are very hopeful. We have not had, I think, the last time that I looked, there were only twenty requests for a refund. That we had processed, I think, keep really hoping that all of these things will come on board.
I saw that had his hand up.
Yes, Laura, you've indicated that there are a number of of factors that that make this. Pool opening question more than decisively clear, one being. Whether our supply chain can help us fix up the pools that need to be fixed. Secondly, of course, we focused on the governor's various stages of opening. But I would, I would, I believe that there is a third one. Which is even harder to know. And that is consumer confidence. Because we see all sorts of survey results that even though many businesses are opening. There is, there is caution on the part of consumers, whether they're actually going to do that. Out of fear of COVID. Have have we given any consideration to that third factor? Thank you.
Yes, yes, we have. That was one of the contributing factors. I think Hank mentioned that for our camps. We did do a survey sent out to about eight hundred families, and we had two hundred responses, and some of them were very concerned. And then after we pulled the the plug on camps, we did have some. Some parents that wrote us back and said, thanks so much for this was, this was tough, and we're glad you closed because we were going to pull out anyway. So that that will be, you know, something for the discussion as we move forward to see how many pools we can open, and if we should open. Does that help a little bit? There's so many end nodes. There's also the 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 training for lifeguards, you know, right now with the American Red Cross. We cannot have in-water training happening right now. So, you know, that that also within in some of our messaging, we've said that, you know, once we do get a green light and we're able to, it is going to take us. You know, it could take us up to three weeks to really turn everything around. It's a, it's a pretty big undertaking to to get all of these seasonals onboard in place. And with the new challenges that we have, that's a lot of new training on how to disinfect, how to rescue someone. These are, this is all uncharted waters. For not only Reston Association, you know, for, you know, pools across the country.
Right. Is there anyone else who wishes to ask a question at this point? As we are at eight forty one. Not to push you, Hank, but we still have a couple more agenda items. So is there anything else? That you've got in this particular item? Are we good to go?
If you guys are good to keep moving on, Christine, if you go to the next slide, these next two slides are, will be in a packet, and they're for your reference to explain. For those new on the board, or just a reminder of how, what what we call triple RF, Repair, Replacement, Reserve Fund, how that works and how it's accounted out, how it works. The next one, please. This was the what we call CARF, Capital Asset Acquisition Reserve Fund, which is for the purchase of or installation of new assets. So again, these are just two references that explain part of the the budget that sometimes is confusing or isn't quite clear that the folks looking at it. For the first time. So could we, could we go on to the next slide? The next thing I was asked to do is kind of give you a little look ahead from staff's perspective, my perspective of some of the critical things that we are need to address. Between, basically, it's almost June and the end of the year, as well as talk a little bit about where we are with the status of our strategic goals.
In this section, I I think we wanted to have as part of the strategic plan, you know, which is what this is about, the looking ahead and status of our strategic goals. I want to make sure that. John Mooney, who and Larry, who are are leads on the comprehensive plan, which falls into our goal number three and goal number four on our strategic plan. If he might give that his piece on that, and then we could get back to.
Sure.
Can you do that? Christina, can you bring up John and Larry's slides? And John, do try to keep within ten minutes or less.
I guarantee it. Okay, so Larry and I wanted to give you this update because the Reston Comprehensive Plan Task Force actually began. Earlier this month. Next slide, please. Some quick background. First of all, during the two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen. Planned residential community zoning amendment process. And by the way, I want to make a. Disclosure, though not required by our our resolution, that I am a member of the Coalition for Plan Reston. So Coalition for Plan Reston and Reston Association collaborated to raise concerns about. The 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 prob, the issues in the comprehensive plan, the two thousand fourteen fifteen comprehensive plan. Which underlay many of the assumed assumptions in the proposed PRC amendments amendments. And at the beginning of two thousand nineteen, both the Fairfax County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors agreed that that was an issue. And deferred consideration of the PRC zoning ordinance amendment until it could be coordinated with review of the comprehensive plan. And true to his campaign promises, in the very first board meeting of this year, Supervisor Alcorn. Raised, made a motion, which was approved by the board to establish Reston Comprehensive Plan Task Force. There are twenty, up to twenty-four members, seven alternates. You can access that with a link on slide five. The calendar, we started on May the eleventh. We will meet roughly every two weeks for about twelve months. And this last part is very important. This is very, very important. And. Not without risk for Reston to to have the comprehensive plan open for review. It's a very aggressive calendar. There are complex and life-critical issues for our A in it. And that's why we want to make sure that both the membership and the board are well informed about the process. Next slide, please. The leadership supervisor Alcorn himself is chairing the process, the task force. Hunter Mill Planning Commissioner John Carter is part of it. The scope is all of Reston that's in the comprehensive plan, not just PRC. Or RA Reston, and Supervisor Alcorn repeated that on May the eleventh. Its goals are to have a clear identification of the issues, to identify resolutions for those issues, and to receive, to. Agree on what we're going to do by way of consensus as much as possible. He realized that that consensus is a difficult goal, but he wanted us to strive for it. He had himself going into this had nine main focuses. Again, there's a link to those on slide five. And he repeated repeatedly said during his campaign, and he has repeated again. In the meetings of the task force, golf course changes are not on the table during this review process. Next slide, please. The last, the first meeting was on May the eleventh. The agenda was to simply to introduce members, to overview the purpose and schedule. There were a few comments by some members, and the recorded meeting and all meetings. Will be reviewable online, link on slides five. The second meeting is next Tuesday, May twenty sixth, from seven to nine. Very important topics. It's going to review the. It's going to review the issues that we're going to work on and the schedule for doing so. The, I will comment, Larry and I will give you more information on that after that meeting, but it's a very aggressive schedule. And you, all of our members can. Attend live by webex. The link on slide five again tells you how to tie into that. Next slide. So what is the community information and participation foreseen by the county? So there's a county website, the link is there. And that includes a link to the actual text of the comprehensive plan as it now exists. It's Supervisor Alcorn's nine focuses, the task force members, and information about how to get to past meetings and future meetings. They hope to have, although COVID obviously has put everything into some question. They hope to have some county-run community meetings. How that will, how that will happen, we don't know, but but Supervisor Alcorn wants it to happen. Next slide. Larry and I represent Reston Association on the task force, so. We we've worked on a team, as a team, on land use issues for some years, so we we really enjoy working together on this stuff. We will give public updates at board meetings, a brief updates with alerts as warranted if something comes up between board meetings. This is very important. We are ready to brief all board members, especially new ones, on the underlying planning and zoning issues from previous years. So when we, when we were briefing members of the Planning Commission and the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors on our issues. In late two thousand eighteen, early two thousand nineteen, we developed a series of briefing papers. Which I I highly recommend that you study. Larry and I will be happy to get you an electronic copy, a hard copy, if you'd like. And to go through them with you. That's important because. That's important because, and I'm skipping down here. The second last bullet. As this task force process proceeds in the rapid way that it proposes. The board will need to take some positions on policy issues, sometimes rather quickly. So there's not time to learn all this at that point. It's time to learn it now. So please ask Larry and me if you want to be caught up on those issues. Going back up to an earlier bullet. The Hank and Larry and board officers will coordinate with other Reston groups as we have. In the last couple of years in regular land use coordination meetings. We are hoping to put up soon on the Reston website, a page where current RA information about the comp plan review can be posted. And finally, I would say that. It is our hope that we can have, we can, even during the COVID period, we can have. Avenues for member input and feedback sessions. Thank you. Any questions? Larry, any comments, first of all?
Now, just the only, the only comment I'd make, and thanks for covering all that, John, is that. One of the differences in this task force than probably. The vast majority of other comprehensive plan task force that have been put forth by the county in any of the supervisory districts. Said this one is actually being chaired by the supervisor. So he's taking this very, very seriously. And as John said, we're going to have to be nimble because of the aggressive schedule that they're coming out with.
I would envision that if we need to call a special meeting on a particular topic, we've done that before and would do so. I see that according to the calendar, there's a couple of these every-two-week meetings before our next board meeting. I assume, John, that we're, we would keep and and Larry keep on the. Full board meeting and agenda item to get updates and. Continue, you know, in that dialogue. So I do appreciate the efforts. And. As you said, we can all. Dial in and watch it ourselves as well, which is a, is a good thing.
I totally agree, Julie, that we should. Whoops, am I on?
Yes.
Yes, I totally agree that we should have, this is a regular brief agenda item on our board meeting.
Yes, that was my intent. Any of our fellow board members wish to comment? I see Karen.
Yeah, I'm just, John and Larry, with regard to providing to board members, some maybe already have this, but could you just send the underlying? Underlying planning and zoning issues from previous years to all the board, so just to alleviate the need for. Some of us to send emails to you requesting it.
Well, wondering, John, did, do we not have a Dropbox folder where we could put? Or create a comprehensive plan Dropbox folder? That that way everybody can get to the same thing, and we're not all getting huge files showing up via email.
That's a great idea.
I see no reason why we can't do it, and I agree that we should. Larry, that should be doable, don't you think?
Yeah, yep, I'll work with Christine, and we'll get a Dropbox specifically set up for the task force.
Yeah, because that way, as John wishes to walk somebody through, it is in Dropbox, and people can look at and take a, take a peek. Anybody else want to ask a question on this one, or can we move? And, oh, Sarah?
I just have a quick question about the coordination group meetings. John, do you have a calendar on it, or would that be advertised on the Reston website?
The regular land use coordination group meetings. Are, it's a smaller group of community interest, and I can refer you to the description in our our strategic plan. So we've had one, and then the pandemic kind of interfered, so we'll be. But it it was also prior to this or this particular task force being kicked off. So I think some, a lot of the people who had participated in that first meeting. Also now, part and parcel of the. Folks that. The twenty-four, whatever number of people is, so, but.
Correct. For 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 efficiency of work, it is a limited membership group. Not secretive, but it's limited membership, so we can really do work. And we've not scheduled the next meeting. I think COVID has, I know COVID threw us off our track. We had begun to meet again, but we'll work with Hank to reactivate the group soon.
All right. Anybody else have something they want to ask, talk? I mean, John, or can we move on to? Given Hank a breather so he can. Get back in the swing, if you're ready for us to move to his piece. All right, I'm gonna yank it away from you, John, and give it back to Hank.
Thank you for the yank.
You're welcome.
Christina, could you go to? It's the slides after the CARF. It's number twelve, I believe. Yeah, there we go. There are two things I was asked to also do was kind of give you a look ahead of what we see or some of the critical things in the next six months before the end of the year. And it obviously, in addition to making sure we open as many of our amenities as safely as we can, as soon as we can. In discussing with the staff and looking at it myself, there seem to be about ten, ten items that really were critical things that we needed to make sure that we. We internally were looking at making sure we got done appropriately. First was making sure we bring staff back to work in a, in a safe way and a way that's, they feel comfortable that we're bringing them back. Because as we all are experiencing, this is a very unusual time, certainly a parallel time for most of us that are alive today. There is a plan that's been put together. HR department's got a team. They're working with other outside groups, looking at what their suggestions are. And the the basic plan is gone through multiple reviews by staff members. So there is a plan indeed, how to help bring people back safely and where they they're safe and they feel comfortable. We also wanted to make sure that we we don't lose sight of, you know, the initiative that the board has given us, which is non-assessment revenue. And seeing if there's anything as as these phases open up, whether or not there's anything towards the end of the year that that we could still look at. Capitalizing on from a non-assessment revenue perspective. Is there anything that we could, that we had planned, that we currently have on hold and those sort of things? So staff is still very enthusiastic about looking at ways to generate new revenue. And and basically using the information we we gathered through the. The Members' Brand and Market Survey, where they actually shared ideas of what they wanted, gave us data of what they wanted that we're currently not doing when it came to events and other programs. So we'll be looking at that. We also, again, staying, staying focused on, you know, where we're going to be with the 2021 budget and beyond, making sure that the relationships that we've worked really hard to develop with our sponsors, that we're looking to sponsor us this year, but, you know, having to pull out, staying in contact with them to see if there's opportunities in 2021 that they might be interested in, or we could work joint law to continue their, their support and sponsorship of Reston Association. We also, obviously, we need to complete, initiate and complete the 2021 budget process, which I believe is, is going to start relatively soon, if not June. I think it's in June, if not June, certainly, or early, early July. And that would include, you know, some risk assessments, as well as the insurance renewal. And, you know, again, recalculating and reevaluating where we're going to be with non-assessment revenues as we go into the 2021 budget fine tuning. Identifying and bring online a new financial software package that meets the fiscal department's needs. Tom certainly has expressed this and is working on it. And the deadline we have in place right now is to, to get this new financial package in place by September or mid to late September. So that's pretty important. We all know that we did not do a very good job, certainly didn't meet our customer satisfaction, 100% customer satisfaction mandate when it came to how we rolled out assessment and assessment process this year. We, we need to make sure that it runs exceedingly seamlessly as we go into the 21 assessment. So that's really, really critical. And a lot of the time, the IT department and fiscal department are putting into that. We, we've, we've mentioned many times that we're not totally happy with our website, want to improve it. A lot of people have good suggestions on it. Mike Leone and his communications team are working on that. And so we're, we're looking at how to, how to upgrade and roll out a new website or get that process moving along as quickly as we possibly can. Megan's already shared it. You've all expressed it today. Continuing to enhance our cluster improvement initiatives, our, our cluster outreach and how we communicate outreach with the group, working with and organizing a board of directors, the DRB, there's also the covenants committee. This joint meeting, which is, we're looking to, to make happen before the, I think the end of June or sometime in June. If not then, it would be July, but certainly very, very soon to make sure we're all on the same page and understand it. Making our clusters work and, and feel more comfortable and getting those standards, helping them with their standards is absolutely critical, is mission critical. We had started the Lake Throw Swimming Pool project. We want to make sure that that doesn't just fall by the wayside because of where we are. So that's also an important, getting the public, continued public input into that. And Reston Association stay, as John just pointed out, we stay as actively engaged as, as a leader in the comprehensive plan task force and process, which we have been doing, and I, it's, it's a very important focus for us as, as we continue throughout the next rest of this year. So those are kind of the, the major kind of top nine, 10 things that, again, besides bringing our amenities online as quickly as possible for our community, these are some, kind of the major internal things the staff really feels we need to spend a lot of time on and focus in on. Don't know if there's any questions or comments about that, but yeah, go ahead.
The summation wasn't in our board packet, so.
This was put together as, this is one of the challenges, I think, you know, we're, we're all having. Trying to get these presentations put together, you know, a week ahead of time, as we're also dealing with some of the other things that are coming up, especially in this, 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 you know, crazy period, has been rather challenging. So yes, this, this presentation, which is being made available, will certainly online for everyone, was not finished until earlier today. And we will do our best to try to get these things done a week ahead of time. But some of our calendar conflicts make, make it kind of challenging to get financials done in time and, and that sort of thing. But we're, we're, we're going to figure it out and make it work.
Yeah, and this is a special meeting, so we don't quite have the same timeline in, in your ability, your staff's ability to prep. I think that the detail information is in the board packet, but this nice little, you know, summary, keep it simple, stupid kind of thing. If that slide could get added, that would be great.
Yep. What also was included in your packet, which is a lot more detailed than the next two slides are. If you can go to the next slide, Christina, please.
Hank, I have a quick question before you move to the.
Sure.
I should have probably asked this around the pools. With Lake Throw, is there any way you're looking at capital improvements while the pools are closed? If there's any that are scheduled for next year or the year after, is there any way?
Yeah, Chris, Chris has a whole schedule, and I, I think that it's probably important, especially for the new board members, to get some time. We'll try to arrange that with Chris, which talks about the capital improvement schedule when it comes to all of our, our capital assets. The Lake Throw pool is a little bit different in that it's a fairly complicated project and it's going to take a lot of, a lot of input.
Sorry, not to interrupt. I do, I've been following Lake Throw and I have Chris's list of projects. I was just wondering with COVID and having a lot of the pools closed, if any of that, we've re, I mean, revisited the schedule to see if we can have anything done now while we're closed anyways.
Are you talking about Lake Throw pools specifically or just all pools in general?
Just all pools and all, you know, we're not using the tennis courts, we're not using any of the ball fields. If there are any scheduled repairs within, say, the next 18 months, is there anything we can move to have them done now while they're closed? So when we're back in action, we don't have to close anymore. I just wanted to know if you had even, if that was something you were looking at.
We, we've talked about it. There, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of complexity to some of these things, including, one, we have to get approval from the board, you know, when it comes to certain capital projects. There's also timing, there's materials, there's contractors. So what, to answer your question in general, yes, Chris is looking at that all the time of whether or not we can move something forward or move it back. When it comes to specifically the Lake Throw pool, there, there is a process we, we definitely have to go through. And I don't think we can speed that along any differently than how we're doing it. And that has more to do with the complexity of the site than not our, our desire to get it done more quickly.
Also been impacted by the pandemic, and you've just seen some financials there tonight, where we're looking at how do we, what we need to do with the funds that are available to us. So yes, Chris has, you know, has been looking. We put some projects on hold, projects that make sense to go forward. I believe Chris is working with Larry and Hank to figure those all out. So we can look to get some additional information.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions for Hank on this, this piece? Go ahead, Hank.
Okay, then the next slide, these are also, these, these are just two summations of our goals. What you have in your packet was a document that said Reston Association 2020-22 board identified key strategic results. And it's, it's a schedule that goes through key strategic goals that actually have been identified that the staff needs to achieve between now and the end of 2022. So you have that in your packet. I thought for the ease of the presentation, it might be easier to go through, what are the specific seven goals that were in the strategic plan and just comment on them? The first one is, has to do with the Reston Association source for annual revenue are growing and becoming more diverse with a focus on non-assessment revenue. That was made the first, you know, goal of the strategic plan and is still a main focus of ours. As I've just shared with you, we are not going to hit the goal for, for 2020. And we're going to do everything in our power to recalculate that, to make sure that at the end of 2022, we are hitting our goals. But right now, missing the first year, and we'll have to wait to see how the year plays out to see how far we miss it, is probably going to have an impact on the next two years part of the plan. But it is still, you know, something we're focused on and something that the staff will be continuing to pursue. But I, I'm telling you right now, we're not going to hit the 2020 component of the non-assessment revenue for obvious reasons. Reston Association is viewed as a workplace of choice by current and potential employees. That's part of what, in, in the sheet I provided with you, is like improve the overall work experience of current employees, was how the board outlined it as a, as a goal for, for myself and for the department, or for the staff. I will, will say that it went a long way when, when last year's board basically voted to approve the Archer report, which helped to bring in line the, the study that looked at compensation for the staff compared to like, like organizations in northeast, northern Virginia, and bring in line the compensation plan and make it more competitive. That has helped enormously with the staff. The other thing that we're doing right now to continue, continue keeping staff happy, because as we know, retaining key staff is, you know, really critical to their overall goal, which is good customer, a top quality, 100% customer satisfaction. It's easier to, to keep good staff than to try to recruit new staff if we lose them. So not only was the compensation plan that was initiated last year very, very helpful, but we're continuing to look at teleworking opportunities. We've learned that we can do it. And maybe that's probably the only thing that's come out of this COVID-19 for Reston Association as a positive. But we've learned that we can do it and we're, we're going to be exploring that. And also making sure that, there, there's lots of little things that the HR department and the, the staff morale committee is, was putting in place to, on a weekly basis, to try to do things virtually. And, and on top of that, having them feel very comfortable and confident that we're, we're trying to make sure that we do not bring them back into the office environment unless it's safe. Those are kind of the things that we're initiating right now. And certainly, there's a lot more that we're going to be doing on retaining, you know, key staff. Number three, Reston Association has a clear, strong and compelling external community presence. And a lot of us on, on the senior level are serving outside boards and staying involved. But I think what John and Larry just outlined, probably the most critical component that's going on in our community right now is centered around development and making sure that what development is taking place, a lot of the, the community is heard and is, a lot of the issues are considered as well as the, the comprehensive plan. And we are indeed taking a very active and serious role in that. Number four, Reston Association will strive to preserve and increase homeowner property values. You know, one of the, the key things that we can do, as has already been outlined multiple times tonight, it has to do with cluster standards, making sure that we, we're making things easier for clusters to enforce violations. And, you know, you've passed a, you know, a directive this evening that's going to help make that happen. But we also have added, you know, from, from the budget last year, we've added three or four new positions in covenants. It's also going to help us in those areas. So we're, we're making some progress, but there's a lot, still a lot more to do there. Number, goal number five, as an organization, Reston Association focuses on innovation and outstanding customer relations and, and management. There's the CRM, and, and this is something I think has to be emphasized across the board, as was emphasized tonight by the board, going to staff. I think all of us have a role to play in, in making sure that we have 100% customer satisfaction. And I think we all are, are in a total agreement that this has to happen. And so it is being emphasized throughout the organization at all levels. We are spending a significant amount of time also communicating better. Mike Leone has had the opportunity, his communication staff, to add two additional social media people over the last nine months, one last year and one this year, and they are having an impact. And we're, we're doing a much better job in how we're communicating the staff, communicating with the community.
Christina, can you go up another slide? I think he's already on.
Yeah, I'm on. You got to go to one more slide. There we go. Resting, number six, Resting Community has pride in Reston Association. And it's, you know, a, a lot of things that we, we need to, to do here. Again, customer satisfaction is going to be the ultimate key here. And as pointed out, the clusters and, and our impact in improving our cluster relationships is, is going to be key, but also being recognized as one of the organizations that's leading the environmental and conservation initiatives in our community. And I think in many respects, we already are, but continuing moving in that, that area is something we've already done and will continue to do. A lot more to be accomplished as we get through the, the strategic plan over the next two and a half years. But that's certainly something we've done. I think that has made a big impact already. And, and finally, Reston Association's facilities, programs and services are aligned with members' needs and wants, are supported by sustainable business practices and are in coordination with the organization's financial capacity. And ultimately, I think this comes back and was driven by the brand and market study, where it was made clear to us by, by many members in the community, especially maybe newer members to the community, that they are looking for other amenities, they're looking for other programs other than what we have historically been offering, and using other communities as a, as a, as a comparison to what we're, we're doing or not doing and ways to improve. So looking at, looking at that data and bringing to the board for consideration and work groups and other, others in the community, getting their input on what exactly they want, and then finding a way to, to providing that was going to go a long way. And we're, we're in the early stages of doing that as well. So in a nutshell, we're, we're making progress, you know, four or five months into the, the strategic goals. A lot, a lot more to do, but we're making progress and we have a, a clear understanding what the expectations are. So any, any questions about what I've shared so far? Okay, that's, that's what I have for this evening, unless you have some other, other questions or other things you'd like me to address.
No, I really appreciate, and I think the full board appreciates the linkage back to our strategic plans. And, and as we discussed earlier, with the interesting covenants and DRB and community outreach, you know, we can pull that into one of our upcoming board meetings as well with that kind of a focus. We did a little bit of the land use tonight, so that's great. We're now at the point of doing executive session that we have on the agenda to discuss contractual matters and consultation with our legal counsel. So I will need a motion to move that, that the Reston Association Board of Director moves into executive session.
Second. Were you asking for the motion, Julie, or did you just make it?
I was asking for the motion.
So moved.
And seconded.
Thank you very much. So I think Christina is going to.
I think we need to vote on that.
We need to vote.
All right. Yes, we do. It's already like, oh, pass, I guess it's already passed, Arden. So I see hands up with everyone, yes? So the, the vote carries. Nobody said stop, so let's keep going.
Okay, so I'm sending an invite for a breakout room. Board members should receive that. Once you receive it, just click join.
And for any members that are on the Zoom or YouTube, we will be going into a second session. You will not be participating at that point. We're expecting it to be about, I'm hoping, 30 minutes at this point. So we'll be back. We'll be back.
Okay, are we all back? Let me see, count them up. I see Sean.
Mm-hmm.
Missing anybody at this point? No, and I even see some members have stayed around for the end, end of this evening. So, Karen.
Yes, I move that the Arrest and Association Board of Directors certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a pending contractual nature and to consult with legal counsel were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during executive session.
We have a second.
Okay, are we all back? Let me see, count them up. I see Sean. Missing anybody at this point? No, and I even see some members have stayed around for the end, end of this evening. So, Karen, you're up.
Yes, I move that the Rest and Association Board of Directors certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a pending contractual nature and to consult with legal counsel were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during executive session.
We have a second.
Second.
I see Tom raised his hand, or Mike can take it.
Sure, second, there you go.
Mike's got it. All right, we have one more motion for the
All those in favor.
Oh, I didn't do that.
Oh yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm hungry and it's late.
Sorry, Madam Chair, for the, for the purposes of a minute, I didn't see Director Iyer vote.
On the
On this vote.
All right, and I voted aye, of course. So now we're good, we have a unanimous ayes on the cleansing. Right, I would entertain one more motion for the night.
Move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Enjoy your evening, I believe that was unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good Memorial Day, everybody.
You too, good night.
Good night.
Good evening, all.